Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting of March 10th to order. Roberta, would you please do the roll call?
Supervisor Wong.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Supervisor Parks. Supervisor Foy.
Here.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here. Supervisor Parks was caught in traffic with an accident on the 101. And we will move on here. We have a little bit emptier boardroom than normal here for Pastor Dave Schultz, but what's happening is all our department heads are in another room over here and they all come, they're working and they all come running in when their item comes up. I thought I'd explain that to you. But for the moment of affirmation, I'd like to introduce Pastor Dave Schultz. He's with the Ventura Church of Christ. And I've had the pleasure of working with him for the last few months as they've been trying to lead the effort in the city of Ventura to do Room at the Inn, which is, you know, have various churches rotate and take some number of homeless people in and one night they're at one church and one night at another church. And he's continuing to work on that effort. He's also on the Board of Project Understanding along with his wife and one other member of his congregation. And has been really pushing to have the Ventura Church of Christ both be a leader in bringing our churches together in the community and also becoming more active and having his congregation be more active in social services and stuff. Supervisor Parks has made it. So it's a real pleasure. I've enjoyed working with him a lot. He's worked with my staff, Cindy Cantle. And she actually recommended I give Dave a call and certainly have enjoyed my contacts with him. So Dave, would you help us start our day off properly?
Thank you Supervisor Bennett for your kind words and thank you also for asking me to offer some words of affirmation to the Board today. I'm doubly honored. As supervisors, part of the territory that you have is that more people criticize you than commend you. Many people think they could do your job better and they aren't shy about telling you so. But few people have any idea of the complexity of your work. They have little idea, if any, of how difficult it is to accomplish things of real and lasting value. And few have any idea of your dedication. As an undergraduate in college, one of my classmates was Jim Hahn, later to be Mayor of Los Angeles and son of County Supervisor Kenneth Hahn. Occasionally, as an undergraduate, Jim would tell us about his father's ethical, financial, and political challenges. For a man who had strong religious and moral convictions, these challenges were serious and were taken seriously. Several years later, in a church setting, I met and worked with Jim's sister, now LA City Councilwoman Janice Hahn. I have never worked with a more values-driven, focused, hard-working, and capable person in my life. Her parents are members of that church. And I learned something of their commitment to serving the people of their district. Few people realize that your job is seven days and seven nights out of every week. Because wherever you are, you're a supervisor. Few people have any idea about your many tasks and about your legal commitments. Few people know how you're limited from doing what seems best to you due to the ways that laws or funding sources are written. Few understand the compromises that you must make in order to accomplish the good that you desire. Few know of your sacrifices and few know of your burdens. But some do know these things and they do know the burden of them. In fact, there may be more people who know about these things than you may realize. They are the people and their families who have done what you do at the local, the state, and the federal levels. People who have sacrificially served people, both in and out of government. And among those who do not know, but who care, there are many who are praying for you constantly, considerately, compassionately. And there is one who completely understands, one who calls for you to lay your burdens on him, and that is God. May he bless and guide your work. May he be your refuge and your strength at all times. And thank you for your conscientious service.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate that. And it's now time for our Pledge of Allegiance and I see Supervisor Zaragoza's aides stand out there. I'd like to welcome you here and why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance here, please Stan.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just eternal.
Welcome Supervisor Parks here and glad that the accident did not involve you. And we're ready for motion on the minutes.
I'd make a motion to continue the minutes one week.
Okay, it's moved to continue the minutes for one week. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, and we're ready to vote. And we're now ready for agenda review. Ms. Robinson.
Yes Chairman Bennett, there's an addendum item for closed session, an agenda item. Also consent agenda item number 14, there's a request for continuance to March 17th. And the time certain item for 1:30 this afternoon, item 26. Materials were provided to all supervisors and uploaded online on Friday, March 6th. And there has been a-
Could you say that again?
On the 1:30 item? The time certain 1:30 item 26. Materials were provided to all supervisors and uploaded online Friday, March 6th. The applicant in relation to that matter has requested a continuance. Since that item's going to be heard at 1:30, if your Board makes a determination to continue it, we recommend that you continue it to March 24th at 1:30. And if you make that determination now, we will be able to advise the applicant that you have done so and keep them from bringing attorneys and spending time and energy on the road.
Okay. Anything else from Supervisors for agenda review?
So are they asking us to make a decision to continue it before the hearing?
Well, we've been asked to continue it.
They haven't specifically asked that you make a decision before the hearing, but they have been told that it's possible you might do it during agenda review so that three people who are coming from various places around Southern California could be advised in advance that they don't need to make the trip here.
But we could do that and then at 1:30 have the clerk or someone here to also let folks know that that's occurred if they choose to do that.
Yes, that is the protocol.
Right.
Okay, alright.
I'd move the agenda with the suggested changes, including the continuance to, of the item 26 to March 24th at 1:30.
Okay, it's been moved. We need a second. It's been moved and seconded. All of the agenda with the modifications as proposed by our CEO. Ready to vote? Thank you. We're now to our consent calendar.
Chairman, I'd like to pull number 15 and talk about that separately.
Okay, why don't we, we'll pull 15, so we have 14 and 15 pulled, so we're now down to the consent calendar items 10 through 16 with 14 and 15 missing. Need a motion for that?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. Items 10, 11, 12, 13, and 16 have passed. 14 has been pulled and 15 Supervisor Foy.
Thank you. I think Ready's out here. I just have some questions on what we're asking here. I know we've got sewer connections is what we're talking about here. And I'm wondering why we're asking this rate increase. It's at a very difficult time for anybody who's trying to do any construction. And I don't know if we want to add, I think it was 6.8% rate increase. Why we'd want to be doing that? Because I know the sewer fee itself, we're not being asked to pay higher water rates. We're not being asked to pay anything that really incumbents, anything on us, right?
Yes. Good morning Chair Bennett, Members of the Board, Mrs. Robinson. Ready Bacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. Supervisor Foy, as you know, this item is for Ventura County Water Work District Number 1, Water and Sewer Connection Fee Annual Adjustments only. This does not relate to the ongoing operation maintenance charges that are paid by our customers. This fee is paid by any new growth. In other words, a developer fee or if a property owner were to request for a water sewer connection fee, they are the one who would be paying this fee. In back in 1995, that's when our Board has approved escalating the construction costs every year. Since 1995, our Board has been escalating the construction cost based on the Engineering News Record, Construction Cost Index for the Los Angeles Region. I looked into what happened in the last 14 years. In the last 14 years, the Construction Cost Index has gone up by only about 50% in the last five zero. And also looked into what has happened in the last 14 years. There were two years, one year there was no change at all. So we did not recommend any increases in one year. And I believe it was 2004, there was about less than one-half of a percent reduction. So we did not recommend any rate increases also. So every year, there has been some increase and we have been consistently recommending rate increases. The question about why do we want to increase it now? If we don't, we think we'll fall behind the curve. That's what we think will happen with the construction costs.
Aren't we at a position, aren't we at a stage right now in construction costs that are coming backwards? That are coming down? Construction costs aren't going up?
Well, construction costs have gone up and down, as you know. In the last five years, they have gone up as much as 50%. And for the last two years, what we have seen is either they have stabilized or have come down a little bit. But they have not really come back to what it was five years ago.
Well, and that's all I'm looking at is if we're in a position where it's stabilized or come down just a little bit, why do we need to go up this way? I would think we're trying to do everything we can to incentivize people to work, hopefully build some new store in some part in the town or do something or whatever so we can get some, our economy going. I hate to help have us hinder that by adding additional fees because some of these fees, like the six, you know, the six inch meter probably for a very big project, somebody's going to spend eight, eight or almost $9,000 more to do that. I'd hate to see us do that. And again, if the cost isn't going up, we shouldn't just increase costs because you just gave me some history of time when you did do that. So why are we doing it now?
Well, again, this is all based on the Construction Cost Index. And when the construction has, cost did not go up, we did not recommend any rate increases. However, we believe if we do not increase the rates, we will fall behind. That's our belief. And that has, and this index, we think is a pretty good index for the construction costs. As I indicated, in the last 14 years, it has gone up by only 50%.
And what do you use that money for when there's a connection? Because we're not building anything, we're just connecting to a sewer or a water system.
It's only used for what we call capital facility construction. Capital facilities are defined as a new well, for example. Construction of a storage reservoir or construction of a treatment plant on the wastewater side. Anytime we have to expand the wastewater treatment plant, we use a construction fee. We account for the construction fee in a different account. We do not co-mingle the construction charges with the service charges. When we look at the ongoing monthly service charges, we are only looking at the operations maintenance charges and not the capital construction costs. These costs are only used for treatment plants, well, construction, wellhead treatment, and also for like pump stations, booster pump stations. Anything that's needed to provide a reliable water supply and sewer service for the new growth. Your Board policy has been to charge the new growth with any facilities that have to be constructed will be paid for by new growth.
Okay, I understand that. I still have a hard time with the fee increase. I understand why you charge the fee though. Okay, thank you.
If there is not, if you don't raise the fees and then when it's time to do one of these improvements and there's not enough money in this fund, how does the improvement get done?
We have to come back with increasing the connection fee for the future. But at a given point, if we do not have enough fund balance, we have to borrow money to pay for those improvements. That means it's going to cost us interest that we have to borrow money to do that. As a matter of fact, in sanitation plant, we recently awarded Phase 1 expansion of the Moore Park Wastewater Treatment Plant. It's under construction as we speak. And for the next phase of the project, we do not have sufficient funding for us to do the next phase of the project. At this time, we are looking into different financing options, including the low-interest loans from the state. And once we come up with the financing plan, we'll come back to your Board and recommend how we're going to pay for the next phase of expansion of Moore Park Plant.
But ultimately, all the money that's being spent there has to be generated from these-
Yes sir.
-connection fees or from these, these rate operations. Well, it seems to me that this is a fairly common sense approach, which is you use a construction index. When it hasn't gone up, we haven't raised it. When the construction index goes up, we should raise it. So it seems to be a common sense way to sort of do good long-run range planning. But Supervisor Foy, in your district, if you're not supportive of it?
I still struggle with it a little bit because you just brought up some other pieces. If Moore Park to a point is almost built out and there's not going to be a whole lot of new connection fees at some point, how are they gonna, I mean, is this really all that they're going to use to try to build these new plants, water plants? Because at some point, I mean, if you look at Thousand Oaks, it's probably pretty much the same way. There's other cities that are pretty much the same way. So at some point, this may not be the ideal. And what are we going to do then if we're going to get somewhere down the line that we're going to have to increase these fees and double them to try to find more money?
Yeah, as for the Moore Park, right now the population is approximately 35,000 people. The built-out population is about 50,000. So we still have the growth component that has to pay for the facilities that have to be constructed to provide the service for those new growths.
Okay, I understand where you're coming, I'm just, at a time when I think that fees would be, we want to be careful about what we're trying to accomplish right now. There is extenuating circumstances is where we're at and I think that's where I come from on this thing. I understand your policy and I, where it's coming from, so. And I'm not sure during a one-year time, because I'm not sure we're going to have a whole lot of connections during the next year or two.
Yeah.
And the idea that we're not, maybe we keep this flat versus 6%, we don't collect a couple thousand dollars, it's going to make a whole lot of difference.
If your Board wishes to do that, you could. However, we need to understand, if some customers were to connect this year, they'll be paying the lower rate. Whereas the next year, somebody's paying the two years' worth of increased cost. So that's equity issue. If your Board wishes to do that, that's your choice. I understand that.
Now, you're saying there'll be a bigger increase later if you don't do this increase right now. Supervisor Parks.
Having studied a little bit of this before, my understanding is the connection fee can only be used for things related to the growth of, that comes from development.
Yes.
And so it's either the rate payers who pay for your system, you're saying that's maintenance and operations, or new development has to pay for this. Since there isn't that much new development coming, I don't see where this is going to be that much of an impact to begin with if you're saying that they're not out there developing right now anyway. And certainly if something's a 128,000 square feet or we've got large developments having to pay a few, a couple thousand dollars more, I don't think that's going to hurt their bottom line. So I'm not too concerned with this. I am concerned though, and it's kind of from a protocol perspective. If you're the supervisor that district, you don't want your developers paying for the cost of inflation. I feel like we need to, you know, honor that, but I just don't want it to be passed on to customers and I don't, and I think it would be a hardship to double the fee increase to, in a year from now and the economy is probably going to be worse.
We're not, we're not talking about doubling the fee because-
Doubling the increase.
Some increase, maybe a couple percent here or there. And if we go through some issue where we find that the cost of construction, I'm sure will be down as it is, as it's going down like this right now, we probably won't have a fee increase, just like you did in 2004 or some other times. So I don't, I'm not sure we're going to see a whole lot of that going forward. I don't want to take this as a district thing. I mean, if this was in anybody's district, I'd be saying the same thing. I'm just concerned about us doing anything that's going to slow or have any impact on affecting the economy and the people's ability. Already these people are paying water rates and everything else. And I just, I know this is only for somebody new and we'd like to do anything we could to have somebody build a house on a lot inside a city or something in anybody's area to try to get some people working and do that. I'm just, I'm just concerned about this whole issue about continuing to raise fees. We struggle with a lot of that stuff. So I don't want this to be a district issue and you're looking at it as in my district. Why didn't you look at it as a district issue? I looked at it as just an idea for our county. We're trying to do whatever we can. We saw our unemployment rate jump and it's going to continue to jump. And I just hate to see this kind of stuff go on like that. So that's where I come from on the thing.
If I could, two, two things. One, although construction cost has, has come down, I, I feel fairly confident that this trend is going to turn around. Even if, even in our economy, as, as we have a slow economy, because what I think you're going to see is as China starts to get back on its feet, et cetera, materials costs are going to start going back up again. So I think we have to be ready. This is a temporary drop, but inflation is our bigger long-term risk out there. And I appreciate your comments about you don't want it to be a district thing. At the same time, I think that generally the Board wants to be sensitive that if the supervisor doesn't want to raise rates on residents in his own district, the other supervisors go, we don't want to, we don't want to do that to you in terms of that, so.
Well, I want to be careful because if it comes to your area, I would say the same thing.
Sure. But, but if I was saying, I think it's okay to raise the rates because I want the service, then I think the other supervisor would be there. Because it really comes down to, you know, it's a little bit like our rate increase. Last time I said to Ready, what happens if we don't raise the rates? He says, we shut the water off. You know, there's, there are impacts of the rate increases in terms of the impacts on people and there's also impacts in terms of, on the system. And when it comes to water agencies in particular, they have a tendency to sort of delay infrastructure improvements and those kinds of things. That's a problem. So I'm not there, if you're not there, is sort of what my, my thought is on this side. So I'd just like to be clear about what, where you are with that.
Yeah, I'm not, like I said, I don't want to go through and continue to raise rates on anything if I can find. Like you said, in the water situation, I knew that Ready had to deal with electricity charges, water rate increases. So he had, you know, those were not something that he had to deal with. Here though, we have the ability to say this did not cost us any more money. So from my standpoint, I would, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to raise those rates, so.
Thank you. Supervisor Wong.
Well, I think there is a cost of doing business and that's both for people who are in the construction business, whether it's residential, commercial, but also for us as the provider of the public service to the community. There is a cost of doing business. And we also know that we're not in the business of profit. We're in the business of providing the service as cost-effectively as possible without, I believe, without escalating fees and rates, without due consideration of what it costs to provide that service. So I think it's, for these, our small water works- So I think it's, for these, our small waterworks districts, with the advisory board that sits there and works with the district to say, is this reasonable? Have we done our due diligence? And is this going to put us in a good position for when there will be a turnaround, and we will need to do these improvements, and we need to have the dollars to be able to do them, to provide quality service for the water districts? So I think the, I believe the staff and the, and our citizen-appointed advisory committees are there to give us their best advice.
Right. I'm not questioning any of that, so I appreciate those comments.
More question?
Supervisor Parks?
I'm just wondering, when you look at the breakdown on Exhibit One, some of these are for commercial industrial development, some six-inch meters. To me, developers coming in with a million-dollar project, I'm not going to try and ding the county essentially for that thousand-dollar increase that he won't have to pay if we don't pass this. But when it comes, if it's a single-family residential unit, I don't think a condominium unit or apartment unit pays, that individual doesn't pay. Is it the apartment owner that pays, or the developer? That's what we're talking about there. So the only one that really affects like a family potentially is the one for single-family?
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, if you want to go there, I can't see subsidizing developers, but if, you know, I'm concerned about the average person who generally doesn't have a new house anyway, but, you know, I could consider maybe at the single-family level looking at it. But I'm not, I'm not looking at subsidizing developers, so, you know, if you, if you're concerned about the little guy, I can, I can, I can hear that for the single-family house. Then I certainly can't have the county paying the cost for the developers.
Right. I think that's a, that's a very good point. And that's really where I'm going. I don't think anybody's doing any development these days. So I'm really that person who bought a lot and wants to build his house, and hopefully everything else is coming down for him, the opportunity. We're trying to give people the opportunity to work and do that. So I'd be more inclined to that. I agree. I don't think we're going to see development, and developers, that's a commercial business. For them, it's a cost of doing business, so.
So is this a suggestion of modifying these rates and coming back with the rate increases for all the commercials and not for the single-family resident? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that would be fine with me if that's what you're thinking.
Somebody want to make?
I have no problem with that.
Somebody want to make that motion?
Okay. I'll make that. That is, can you live with that? I mean, can you, under this, do that?
We can certainly do what your board wants us to do, but we have to have a nexus about where the costs are. We have to show why commercial costs are more than the residential costs. It's going to be difficult to show that as a nexus, why is that we are subsidizing, even within the capital improvement charges. We have to have a nexus between the residential and commercial.
Good point. Yes, sir. Mr. Zaragoza.
Mr. Ready, is this a one-time cost that's added to the price of the home? So it's not an ongoing cost?
Yes, sir. It's a one-time connection fee when they first
It's a connection fee to connect to the service that everybody else has paid for.
Yeah, in other words, it's a capacity charge in the sanitation side, on the water side, reliability like storage and water supply. That's where you're
Really, all we're looking for is for the privilege to use that water system that everybody has paid for. So it's a one-time cost?
One-time, correct.
So I think, you know, that's very significant, you know. If somebody's going to build a home, and they want to join the system, and they need to pay to connect to that for that service.
And if it helps, when we compare our connection fee throughout Ventura County, water connection fee and sewer connection fee, the connection fee charged by water district controlled by your board are below average.
Okay, I'm glad you, that's great to hear. You're doing a good job there.
So just, we don't want to charge residential, was that the motion to?
Well, he sounds like he has an issue, he sounds like he's going to have more of an issue on how to handle that if he does, anyway. I don't want to put him in a position. Like I said, I just don't want to, I just don't want to see us raising. Remember, when you talk about building a home, I've done this before, you're not, you're talking about paying this charge, you're also talking about paying a school charge, you're talking about, I mean, you're going to permit, you're talking about thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. I'm trying to say, anything we can do to help our community, that's where I'm going from. It has nothing to do with the idea they're only going to pay
You don't want to delete those.
A hundred and fifty dollars more. It's not the end of the world if somebody's building a $200,000 or home.
Is it a reasonable cost, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm just, in a time when things are tough, we should not be raising fees if we don't have to. If we get caught charging more, that's fine. That's where I'm coming from.
My whole understanding was a connection fee is a connection to use the service.
Yes, sir.
Right, and that's, and I agree, and we're not changing that. You're still going to pay the $2,136 versus $2,081. That's, that's my thing. We're still going to pay that fee. It's not going to, we're just not going to charge the additional 6.8%. That's all I'm saying.
Supervisor, I think with essential public services, there is a solid discussion point for looking at, are we doing advanced planning and advanced funding to make sure when the time comes to provide that service, we can afford to put it in place and not cost some other department outside of the service area, which is our policy decision that these are, these are districts that basically we oversee and stand alone. To look at where we say residential development or other development funds, I think it comes through what we do in other policy actions to streamline the planning process, to look at our fees that are charged for planning. I think there are other ways that we can impact that that are more discretionary than what I see this as, as an essential public service. I would argue the point with you, but it's your district.
I really don't want to play that district thing, because I really just, it's a philosophy of mine in that situation, because if we don't have the money, let's say we don't have enough money to add a new sewer system, I don't think we should be asking anybody else in the county to pay for that. I think the residents who use that sewer system should pay for that. So if at some point, we come in and we're $5 million short, the idea we, a 6 percent or whatever we're short, you'd go back to those people and say, we're going to put a new sewer system into service your homes and your businesses, you would pay that fee. I mean, that's a reasonable thing. I have no problem with user fees, people who use things and do that. All I'm saying is during this time, we shouldn't be increasing these fees, and I don't think, and, I see, I'd rather, because at some point, we don't know when we're going to build this system, we don't know what we're going to do. We should, at some point, yes, we should raise money, and that's what this fee is for. We should have some income going forward. We don't know what the cost of, and we don't know when we're going to need that system, do we?
We do. Every system has a master plan. Based on the master plan, we know how many facilities we have to construct, then we come up with the cost of constructing all the capital facilities, then divide by number of connections.
Right, I guess what I'm saying is, we don't know the time, because we don't know when those projects will
Yes, timing, like, we don't, it all depends on the economy.
It all depends the economy, depends the number of properties. So we could go through here, and we could have a 6 percent this year, 6 percent next year, 6 percent, or whatever, and all of a sudden, we haven't built a whole lot, we just increased our 6 percent. And so at what point were we trying to get so much money to pay for this? We didn't know, because it's all based on economy, and none of us can pick when the economy's going to be good and how, like you said, in Moore Park, from 35,000 to 50,000. And, you know, at that point, it's interesting you say a 50,000, because the mayor's only told me their build-out's 39,000, so that's why I said it wasn't, it was almost built out at that point. So, anyway, I, again, I don't want to, I don't want to make this district, I just don't want to pay for a fee. That's my thing. But I think the rest of them make their argument, and I think they make a good argument. Mine is, I just don't believe we should be doing that at a time where it costs us nothing, no, no new increase at this point. But that's where I come from.
Well, we're, I mentioned just this, this one thing, and that is that if there is some development that comes in, we have to, what we have to do is sort of try to make sure that that development pays for, let's say, and it's going to increase the demand for things, but it's going to be a year or two or three before we actually build it, then that development, when it comes in and pulls their permit fees here, needs to pay whatever it is, and it's, it's always a challenge to try to figure out, what is that plant going to cost? So a reasonable approach, I mean, what's that plant going to cost in three years? We don't know for sure, but it's a reasonable approach to just keep tying our rates to the construction index as the construction index goes up. At least you have a better chance of recovering, because if you have, if you do have a lot of development that takes place two or three years before you build a thing, and then you don't have much at the time that you're building the thing, you have no new development fees to pay for this, now your current rate payers have to pay for that expansion. There's always that frustration. With that being said, I think it just comes down to a motion, so what, you were starting to make one motion, I don't know if you still want to make that motion?
The motion, though, was the residential, which I thought was fine, because that's where I'm, that's really what I'm focused. I don't think there's going to be any cost at this point now, but I think that causes him too much issues, and I don't want to put that in that.
So do you have a different motion to reject this, or what?
Yeah, I guess from my standpoint, I'd just, I'd like to reject it for now. That's where I, that's the motion that I would think, that we not approve this. But, you know, motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny?
No, if I may, I have a really hard time on this one, because I could see, looking at the rates, sewer rates, you know, people in their homes are, you know, trying, some of them are trying to hold on to their homes, those are the people we need to help. Developers who are building mega-million-dollar projects, they don't need to be subsidized by government, and that's what this is. So I'm having a hard time supporting this.
It's not a developer issue. I mean, right now, the problem I have with the other side
This is a developer fee. That's exactly what connection fees are, they're development fees.
Well, go build your own home and pay all those connection fees.
I can't afford to build my own home.
Well, I'm saying, at some point, you're going to see all those fees, and we should not be in that situation. I'm not talking about the developer, I don't think you're going to see any developers do anything right now. I don't think you're going to, it has nothing to do with them, and this, the water fees and all that stuff, we'd love to not do that, but we know those water fees cost us more money. We know cash is going out of our pocket. In this situation, we know nothing's going out of our pocket. That's how I look at it for now. And now, if there's a rate, we have to increase rates when people are working, and quote, the developers are making money, or you said, whatever you develop, but I'm really more concerned with the single-family home, and I think that's really all we're going to see built. But again, I would like to
Supervisor Long?
I will second the motion. I've asked Mr. Pacala that you certainly take this back to the advisory committee, and that at the point that there is an application or something that, you know, is coming down the pike, such as a filming company building a large warehouse site in Moore Park, that the advisory committee would do the analysis of what that's going to cost the district, and that is brought forward to the board.
And I think that's a reasonable
So that we have, so we have reports of the impact, so this decision today can be looked at so that the rate payers, who are the smaller residential, that there is no harm, that there's no harm.
That's, I guess, the very right thing to do.
Can I ask if that's, if it's legal to consider raising a fee after an application's already in, we're okay with that? Because that application's in, knowing how much it's going to cost, then come back and look at raising the fee?
Well, it could be a problem depending upon the timing. If, if the person comes in and you have a rate structure, and all they have to do is pay the fee, they're going to pay the fee right then and there. It isn't, there isn't going to be a situation where Mr. Pacala's staff can say, oh, wait, don't pay the fee today, we want to go to the board and raise the rates on you.
Exactly, but I would think with advanced planning that's done by, as we do, the city or the county, and you see that there's a project that's, that's being in the pre-application stage, that there's some assessment done, I don't know how else to do this, because I, I think that you've got a public policy discussion here, that philosophically, you have a difference, philosophically, we, I have a difference, because I, but I, again, it is a district decision, because
How about this, how about, can I, can we pull this for now? And you and I can sit down and talk about some of this stuff, so we don't, because I don't want to change the policy, because I think there's been some good things in regards to policy, that we don't want to be like, we talked about some of those water districts who have not planned for infrastructure issues. That's, so we can talk through some of that. Why don't we do that? If we can pull this motion, then we can continue this?
Second.
Great.
So we have a new motion to continue and seconded, and we're ready to vote, our motion to continue.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Certainly wasn't a consent item, I'm glad you pulled it from the consent calendar, right?
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that.
These are tough ones that are going to be coming to us, because the cost of doing business is such, and so they aren't easy items.
Well, and as, however this may come back, I guess the question that I would have for our staff is, I would, I would like to have our policy be that people that are putting new stress on the system are the ones that should pay for the expansion, and to try to make sure that we don't inadvertently transfer that to existing residents, because that's what drives existing residents crazy. They say, hey, my rates went up just because somebody new wants to expand, you know, came and wants to expand, so.
We have to be careful, because the person who is purchasing a home or building a home or doing something right now, remember, somebody else paid for them to have the system they're on now, right? They're not paying for a new system, because they're going to be connected to the system they're already on, that's already there. So the idea that something, when somebody says, I don't want to pay for something new, hold it, somebody paid for you, because your fee right now is going to the future, not to the past. So I want to make sure we understand that.
Let's say your sewer plant capacity is for 10,000 homes.
Right.
And then somebody comes in, and you're getting close, you're at 9,500 homes, somebody comes in and wants to build 2,000 more homes, and that's going to trigger a new sewer plant capacity. Should they pay for that, or should?
No, that's what I'm saying, no, there's no question, but I'm saying the 500 homes they're going to build over the next 2,000 aren't going to pay for the whole system. It's what those people prior, were according to Ready, they saved up that money, all those 5,000 homes or whatever
From their new connection fees.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying. So, I agree. But again, I wasn't looking at the development side. I know you're looking, I wasn't looking, I agree that everybody should pay their impact.
Supervisor Long?
I think, and with the water districts, I would hope, and I expect they do this, that they, they go to the nearest impact area city and say, you know, looking at their general plans, looking at their growth projections, I'm sure they do that analysis, and do they revisit it often enough to make sure that they're looking at capacity, they're looking at the mix of users, and then they're looking at the rates and the cost of the
And that's exactly why I want to spend some time with Ready to understand that whole piece, because I agree with you.
Okay. Well, that was a healthy discussion, as they usually are, and we're done with the consent calendar. Do we have any public comment cards? Board comments, then, and we'll, we'll start with Supervisor Zaragoza at this point in time, Eric.
There you go.
Thank you so much, and I'd like to adjourn this meeting in memory of my constituents, and I have a list here. And also, I'd like to share with you that, that tomorrow morning, you know, we've been working with the El Rio School District, and we're having, I'm attending a school summit with the schoolchildren, the parents, and community leaders in El Rio to lift up or encourage the students to, to do good, you know, in the community, to work with the families and so forth. And also, in the afternoon, my chief of staff, Stan and I, are going to be attending an ambassador forum, so we can speak on behalf of the El Rio School District, highlighting the student achievements and working with the Student Excellence Program. On the public outreach, you know, our staff has been working with the community. I had Lurdis, my assistant, she participated at the annual women's conference at Oxnard College this weekend, did an excellent job there for us. I spoke before the LULAC Citizen Advisory Group this Saturday, last Saturday. Also met with the president of Cal State, Dr. Rush, you know, and looking at some of his concerns and how we can help him with his ideas. Also met with the South Windsor Neighborhood in Oxnard to hear their concerns over in the 5th District. And we continue to meet with the El Rio, Nylon Acres, Strickland constituents regarding their concerns, and we're planning a neighborhood cleanup for El Rio, Strickland, and Nylon Acres, and we continue to work with the MAC there. And we continue to work with the MAC there. So we're progressing and helping out my constituents in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you. Couple things. March is Women's History Month. We should all take a moment to honor women in history and women making history. Oxnard Public Library's going to host on March 23rd a female composers during the ragtime era. This just caught my attention 'cause of the significance of both Women's History Month, but they're celebrating this in Oxnard and not to share with Supervisor... To share with Supervisor Zaragoza that I think it's great that Oxnard's doing that at their public library and recognizing women in history. I'd also like to extend appreciation out to the sheriff for the Office of Emergency Services and working with our area schools to promote disaster awareness, where the sheriff sent out 170 letters to the Ventura County Elementary and Middle School principals, asking them to join in the effort to promote disaster preparedness, assisting children in becoming trained, educated, and better prepared. Just thinking of the work that we are... And Supervisor Bennett in leading the way to look at our... Making our communities better prepared. And this certainly is another piece that helps with that. And then I'd like to report out that the CSAC, Government Finance Operations and Health and Human Services, held a special joint policy committee meeting to consider the special election ballot measures, which are 1A through F. And in that consideration, they forwarded to the special meeting of the Executive Board of CSAC that took place on Monday, a recommendation to take a neutral position on these items, after much discussion. And the neutral is just... Is a position we're taking at this time until further information may... Or development may occur with some of these items. Obviously, we have some concerns with various pieces. There was comments on the Prop 63 piece. And what's occurred with that is that the court did order that the title and summary has to be redrafted on 63, so it clearly calls out that there will be a tax increase tied to that. And the governor asked us for support on 1A and 1C. We will be sending a letter to the governor that says, at this time, we cannot support those. I'm sorry. We're taking a neutral position on those. We have concerns with the spending cap, just because there is still an issue for all of our counties in the Cost of Doing Business bill that's still sitting out there. So... And we also don't have the piece as to the federal stimulus and the potential of how that may or may not impact these measures. I think there was a thought of getting... Then we may be getting more federal stimulus dollars than what we actually will be getting to... That will impact the services identified in these measures. The CSAC Executive Board took the same position on Monday, and it will go to the Board of Directors next week. I'll just have to let you know that there was quite a bit of conversation on the measure that caused for the Maldonado measure, that caused for not paying our legislative leadership when they don't lead. There was a bit of conversation about that, but we decided not to bloody their nose. So we decided to just stay with a neutral position again at this time. And I'd just let the board know that the California Chamber of Commerce and the California Taxpayers Association have endorsed Proposition 1A. Teachers Association is supporting Proposition 1B. And so the unions at this point, I understand, are still weighing what they're going to do. And as you know, there is a opposition mounting on the Prop 63 measure. So stay tuned. All of that impacts, of course... The measures are so entwined to impact the state budget that, as Supervisor Foie mentioned, I think, last week, we're already hearing there's a $12 to $14 billion deficit already for next year. So none of this is a perfect... None of it's perfect. None of it's certainly a perfect solution either. I'd also like to mention, and that's the end of that story for the CSAC report. Stay tuned. I'd like to mention and congratulate Port Winneby, the city of Port Winneby. They have been awarded the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award by the Government Finance Officers Association in the United States and Canada. And that's wonderful for a city small but mighty that Port Winneby is to have received that and be acknowledged that way. So congratulations to them. I'd also like to let you know that the Santa Paula Downtown Merchants Association and Santa Paula Hospital is presenting a community health fair called Be Well this Saturday, March 14th, 11 to 2, on Main Street in Santa Paula. And there's a... Flyers have been dropped off, I believe, at all the board offices. Just another good showing that our healthcare agency, in cooperation with the good people of Santa Paula, are out there promoting our hospital and services that are being offered in that community. Also, those of us who have an opportunity to visit our fountain outside at the Hall of Administration on Wednesday at 6:00 PM, and also in our foyer, on display through March 20th, we have the Santa Clara River Watershed. It's a visual and educational exhibit. And please take an opportunity to go and take a look at that. It's sponsored by the South Coast Wildlands Visual Journeys and the Santa Clara River Trustee Council Exhibit. And I think it's great that they're doing that. And my last item is to ask the board to adjourn in memory of those folks on the list, and I call out one, Ann T. Donahue. Ann is a resident... Has been a resident Camarillo for 29 years. She's a benefactor for the Donahue Healing Garden at the Pleasant Valley Hospital in Camarillo, which is a beautiful garden that's in the center of the hospital, place of rest and meditation for patients, family, and staff. She was a teacher's aide for 10 years at the West Valley Occupational Center in Woodland Hills. Her garden is absolutely beautiful, and we truly appreciate. And she will be a great... She is a great loss to our community and certainly to the folks at the hospital. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Foie?
Thanks, sir. I also would like to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. And just my comment on the Pastor Dave Schultz. I thought he did an excellent job this morning, and it is so important that we do have the faith base and all the other community organizations working to make sure that we do whatever we can during this time. The homeless is continuing to grow. I was looking at numbers. We saw in the jobless rate, we saw that almost 9,000 jobs in January were lost here in Ventura County alone. And so that's not a positive sign. So we need to have all these organizations out working and doing that. I just appreciate what he was doing. But on a good... On a more upbeat note, Moore Park High School wins that Gold Coast Future Business Leaders America competition for the 18th time in a row. And that was great to see. They were the only top winner of overall points, the only Ventura County school in the top 10. So graduation in number 18. But what that shows to me is, Moore Park does a lot of great things. I think it goes back to great leadership and the teachers working with these kids. I mean, we all have great kids in our schools and that kind of stuff, but it just goes back to showing that the leadership and the teachers and all those who are willing to participate and work hard for these kids. It's amazing what can be accomplished. So it's great to see that. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. I wanted to just mention a couple of things about Senate Bill 375. I've been recently appointed to the Regional Targets Advisory Committee, which is a statewide committee that looks at setting targets for greenhouse gas emissions as required by the Senate Bill 375. And there seems to be a lot of different conferences and workshops on SB 375. Attended those from SCAG and VCOG. I'm going to the Local Government Commission this weekend, which is also focusing on that. And then I look at what we're doing in our county towards that end. At the Transportation Commission meeting last Friday, the city of Thousand Oaks loaned Caltrans $6 million to start working on the widening of the 23101 interchange, which is a bottleneck right now. And also looking at the synchronized signals that we put in on Santa Rosa Road to help keep traffic flowing, and it has been remarkably successful. We had a synchronized project we were working on on Canaan Road, which was not. And there were a lot of complaints, residents accessing Canaan all of a sudden had to wait a long time. But the people in Santa Rosa Valley were very much supportive of this, and I think that's why we haven't been getting complaints. And it's great to see it working. And it wouldn't be there if it weren't for Nazir Lallani particularly, who led the charge on that as an expert in synchronization. So we're lucky to have him on staff to do that, and Butch Britt and his staff. So they need to be recognized, and I hope to do that perhaps at our next meeting. Oh, no, no. Right on red is down. And then also, just talking about 375, I have quarterly dinner events that the public is invited to. And our next event is going to be talking about reducing greenhouse gas emissions and working towards a green economy. And Senator Pavly will be the speaker for that one, and that's on March 26th. And she's also going to be mentioned in a speech I'm doing on Women's History Month. And the theme of Women's History Month this year is women saving the planet. And I'll be speaking at Cal State Channel Islands next... Actually, this week. And for that speech, I'm focusing on women saving the planet and from Rachel Carson, who started it all with Silent Spring, talking about DDT, and then looking at our local women who are helping saving the planet, and including people like Roma and Jean Harris, Roma Arbus and Jean Harris. Erica Hernandez, who was the young woman from... Young lady from Winneby High School, who worked with fighting LNG and then brought Jane Goodall to the high school. So just looking at individuals, Mary Weisbrock and Sue Boker with Almondson Ranch, and Margot Fuer with the National Recreation Area, the Santa Monica National Recreation Area. Carol Olson and Carol McDonald, who collected signatures to protect mountain lions from being hunted locally. And someone who isn't one of the most favorite people of our flood control, but Heather Wiley was a United States Army Corps biologist, or a chemist, actually. And she decided that, in the face of a court action that said that you don't... The Army Corps doesn't have to recognize streams and creeks if they're not navigable, decided to take a kayak down the Los Angeles River. Lost her job, but as a result, I think, made a big statement. So you see women having courage and standing up and doing things to protect the environment. So it will be fun making the speech and connecting with the people out there in Channel Islands, but it's also a nice recognition, too, and thinking about women saving the planet. They're the ones that are out there. A lot of them are out there doing that. So it's nice to recognize them. I'd also ask that the board close in adjournment to the people on this list, and that completes my comments.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. And we have a... Michael Ryan Murray passed away at the young age of 30. He's been part of the Ventura County Sheriff's Department since 2002. And so that's a tough loss for everybody to lose a young man at that age and one of our sheriff's deputies. The... I appreciate an article that was in the Sunday Star. Hopefully, other supervisors saw it, and that's the article about the seniors struggling. Really compelling statistics in here. In Ventura County, 46% of seniors living alone can't afford basic necessities. 31,000 seniors living below the elder index. 7,000 female seniors in one-person households living below the elder index. Those are 7,000 women at great risk living below the elder index and living alone in those situations. And it just... It's sobering. And quite frankly, it's sobering and humbling to be reading those kind of statistics and know we sit here, the Board of Supervisors, with such responsibility for the defenseless in our community. And at the same day that I read this, I had the pleasure of reading this other piece that I'd like to read into the record, because I think it's a little bit like the moment of affirmation, something for all of us to think about. But this person was writing about the difference between ideological advocacy, which all of us sort of do during election campaigns and, you know, coming from political parties, but the difference between ideological advocacy and actually holding public office. Having accepted partial responsibility for the well-being of your citizens, one assumes an obligation that goes beyond bumper sticker slogans. Certitude is the enemy of wisdom, and in office, it is wisdom, not certitude, that is required. And as I struggle with what's the right thing to do for these seniors? What's the right thing to do for our foster kids? What's the right thing to do for public safety? What's the right thing to do? I thought this really did speak to me, and that is certitude is the enemy of wisdom. And in office, wisdom, not certitude, is required. And that line of having accepted responsibility for the well-being of our citizens. So it was a sobering thought, and I wanted to share that with the board. I appreciate the comments about Women's History Month. I wanted to share one that goes way back to a woman that we don't normally hear very much about, but it's the first woman doctor in the United States. But back in the mid-1800s, medical students voted to accept her in because they thought it would be great fun to watch her get sick and not handle surgery and all of that kind of stuff. So they voted her in as a joke, literally. And she came. She, of course, you can imagine, she graduated number one in her class and completely broke the barrier about women in medicine. It was Dr. Helen Blackburn back 1848 that did that. And that class that voted her in did not have the kicks and the laughs that they thought they would. So that's a little piece of women's history I thought I would share with you today. And with that, we're ready to move on to our other items. We have a half hour. I suspect we'll be able to get through all of our items. So department heads that are out there, we're ready to move, starting with item 27, I believe. And Melanie, good to see you.
Good morning, Chairman Bennett, members of the board, Mrs. Robinson. Melanie Ward, the Behavior Health Department. Item 27 contains actually six recommendations for your consideration today. And any point, please feel free to ask questions, and I'll try to be brief. If I'm going on too long, you can interrupt me. I want to give you some detail, but not too much. So just let me know. The first recommendation requests your authorization for the Audit Controller to process the necessary accounting transactions to adjust appropriations on anticipated revenue. The department was faced with a $1.8 million budget reductions total during this fiscal year, and the department has successfully mitigated most of those reductions through corrective action. The shortfall is currently $622,000, of which about $240,000 is for county-funded Penal Code 1370 placements. The major corrective actions included discontinuance of 3632 placements at for-profit facilities, which are not reimbursed by SB 90 funding, and effective February 1st, the discontinuance of eight FTEs in the Mental Health Budget 5130 organization. Due to a startup of new MHSA programs, which I'll discuss later, we were able to avoid any layoffs. We're working on our 910 budget, of course, We're working on our 910 budget, of course, with the goal of closing the $622,000 gap with a combination of cost savings and increased revenue. And, for instance, we anticipate some help from the FMAP increase. So if you have any other questions on that recommendation.
I have a comment, but I just want to get out there right away. I'm still certainly entertain questions. But this is a very important action on your part. I just want you to know that we recognize that. And what I really appreciate, after we went through a number of years of we'd have the cutbacks and people would be coming to us, and then we would be trying to patch things back together, is very proactive action on your part. And by being proactive, you're able to maximize the revenue sources, get the positions moved over into positions that will really be funded. And I just want you to know personally, I really appreciate that. Clients will be served much better. And it begins that process of what we said, which is just because we have less revenue doesn't mean that we don't do more. We have got to just keep being creative and creative and creative here. And that means everybody that works here has got to keep screwing their hat on and going, what else can we do different? How can we look at this thing differently? So I really commend you for this. Supervisor Parks.
I echo Supervisor Bennett's comments, and it is very proactive, and it's good to see, and it's nice to have the Mental Health Services Act funds. My question is, do we have some thoughts on what will happen if the proposition passes where it allows for basically supplanted? Yes?
Currently, we don't have any specific information as to which funding streams of MHSA might be affected. So it's really unclear at this point if there would be any local effect of that. I know that CMHDA is advocating very strongly at the state level that that funding be reverted from programs that are not started already or for funding streams that are not planned for already, such as innovative programs. So I know that advocacy is happening very strongly. So we're in a bit of a wait-and-see, I think. I am hopeful that they will utilize funds that are unplanned for, and I think that that's the direction people think it may go.
Okay. It does seem, just from a quick brush on it, that it looks like we'll have less funds as a result, that funds that we would already be getting will now be considered MHSA. I don't know if that's the way you like how, but it does seem like it will, and overall be less funds for mental health.
As a result of 1E?
Yes.
Well, there's...it depends which funding streams. First of all, it's a two-year reversion of funding, so for those two years, it depends on which funding streams they tap into. It could forestall some implementation of new programs. So again, I think it's wait and see.
Wait and see. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Supervisor...okay. Supervisor, there it goes.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank you for the excellent work and also for the...to establish that reserve that I think is going to be so important in your operations. I just want to commend you for thinking ahead, for looking at...to being prudent, especially with the...with our current financial crisis. But I just want to thank you for the excellent job.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that...
Supervisor Long.
I believe you've just covered the first part of this item, so there's not...we're not ready for motion yet because there are multiple parts of this. And the piece on 63 is two-year, and they're proposing it would be redirected to pay for the EPSDT, which is a federal mandated program and which was otherwise paid out of general funds. So, you know, but there's a lot left in this discussion because I have some questions on other pieces, so.
Okay, so recommendation two is establishing a prudent reserve. And as you know, that's a requirement of MHSA that we have 50% of our allocation. That's going to amount to about $9 million for this county. Recommendation three requests the authorization to transfer seven FTEs from mental health to MHSA. And this is for a new program for the department, which provides evidence-based recovery services for high-risk populations. Recommendation four and five requests your authorization to establish 12 FTE position allocations for, again, Mental Health Services Act-funded positions in one fiscal position, an organization 5010. All of these positions are funded by MHSA. I want to explain this a little bit because, you know, in difficult budget times, here we are adding positions, so I want to just go into that a little bit. What we're trying to achieve is we're...five of these are clinical positions which expand our IDDT program, and they expand our full-service partnership program, which really focuses on people with serious mental illness. As you know, the decisions regarding how we spend the MHSA money is fully vetted through a stakeholder process, and it's approved by the Mental Health Board prior to bringing them to you. I've done a number of presentations to community, informing them of the state of our current mental health programs. And I just want to point out a couple of things to you. In our Oxnard clinic, which currently serves about 1,500 clients, we have, just as an example for clinical staff, two psychologists, so the caseload ratio is 750 to 1. We have 3.5 clinicians, PSWs and MFTs, so the caseload is 430 to 1. We have 16 case managers, so the ratio is 94 to 1, and three nurses at a ratio of 500 to 1. So no matter where I've presented this data, people have been very clear in their direction to me to make sure that we utilize MHSA funding to shore up core services for the seriously mentally ill. We are not going to be successful in preventing costly hospitalizations and costly out-of-county placements unless we provide clinical services. So some of these positions that we're establishing, which are granted county positions, are to shore up the adult mental health services. One, the IDDT program, 45%, at least 45%, it's probably underreported, of our seriously mentally ill also have a co-occurring disorder. And also, we treat a lot of people with schizophrenia and major mood disorders. We do not currently in the department have adequate treatment for those people. So some of these positions that we're creating, we're strategically using MHSA funds to shore up the adult system. And so it's a very purposeful move in that regard. We also are very mindful of community-based organizations and the fact that they're struggling to with the current economy. We've got about $5 million right now out there in contracted services that are a combination of MHSA funding, you know, MHSA programs that are funded by MHSA and a combination of Medi-Cal. So when we go into our stakeholder process for 910 planning, we're going to make sure that we bring everybody to the table, and we talk about the continuum of care and how can we best provide that for the Ventura County residents in the most cost-effective way, assuring quality. It's a complicated process, and, you know, we're doing...the focus is the client, so if you have any questions about that.
You're adding some full-time employees?
Correct.
Are you taking them from other places? Or how many...because you said you have no layoffs, right?
Correct.
So are you moving...I see you're moving some, seven?
Yes.
Is that right?
That's right.
Seven are moving?
We're moving seven, and we're creating 12 new positions.
12 new positions that we're going to go outside to rehire, to bring in, as 12 new people or just people we're going to move?
12 new people, in addition to the seven that we're moving.
Okay.
And part of the reason we're doing this is that when, you know, when we look at the continuum of care that we need to provide for the mentally ill, there's certain classifications that we need to shore up within the department. So we're adding some clinical positions.
And then your funding is coming from?
MHSA and Medi-Cal.
Medi-Cal. So that's guaranteed funding for us?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as all the millionaires don't leave the state of California.
Okay. Well, but that's part of it, because that's based on some projection, right?
We've got a 13...this year's allocation for MHSA is 13 million. Next year's planning estimate is 18 million.
Okay, but the 13...this year, you're talking about '09, '10?
No, this current fiscal year. And then the estimate, planning estimate for next year is 18 million, and we've had no indication that that's going to change. Then the projected allocation going forward after that, because of the economic downturn, is about 13 million. So what we're doing as a department, we're in the process right now of working on a five-to-seven-year plan that we are going to be projecting out, kind of, you know, have to deal with contingencies as they, you know, as they rise. And we're looking at about a 13 and a half million dollar, we believe, allocation yearly. So that's what we're going to plan for.
So you're going to find a difference between that 18 and...
There's a $5 million difference.
$5 million difference. All right. But going forward in the rest of this year, are we...is there a guarantee on the amount of money? There is?
For this year, yeah.
For this year? And then next year, the 18 that you're talking about?
Yep.
You'll know. How much in advance knowledge you have to try to balance this?
Well, they've released the planning estimates already, and we haven't had any indication that that's going to change. So we've been told, based on the collections, you know, from the Prop 63, that it's going to be an $18 million allocation to this county next year.
Okay.
And you're right, there's a big discrepancy between 13 and 18.
Well, I'm just also, as I'm looking at some of the difference in what you see statewide tax-wise, I mean, you see a lot of the people that are making more than a million dollars aren't making that. I'm just curious if they just...is it a projection? You know, sometimes the state, when they did their budget a year ago in June, they projected we'd have a 7% growth.
Right. Yeah, this is working a little...these allocations are working in arrears a bit, so I think the 18 solid.
Okay, good.
What we're concerned about would be the following year, and based on what they're feeling is occurring presently, they believe that we're going to drop back down to the $13 million range.
Okay. I just...I'm just more...if we have the opportunity to have people, to move them instead of laying them off is more my thing and not hire new. But I know you have certain classifications, you don't have some of those people, you have to do, so...okay, great, thank you. Supervisor Long.
Well, and I believe we treat these just as we would grant dollars. Obviously, if there's a severe drop, you'll have to deal with that. I think the ratios you've given us of our professionals to our clients is startling, so I think this will help in that respect. And I think that it is very important, we've done a good job in the early development of the plan, having multiple stakeholder groups and input, that we continue that. And I fully support that our existing CBOs were where appropriate, that they fit in their service delivery, that we continue to support them because they're part of that safety net. And so I appreciate hearing your comments on that piece of it.
Supervisor Parks.
I just wanted to comment. I know we actually had determined how much money we were anticipating this year and had more come in than we were anticipating, millions more, as I recall, in MHSA. So it does fluctuate, and we understand that. And as you're saying, treat them like we do grant dollars. But these kinds of positions, to me, it's like having cardiologists in our medical care. You have to have this clinical support for, you know, people with schizophrenia and such, so I think it's a good move.
Just one more question. Did you...I think you said that what we're trying to do also with strengthening our professional core is to address the needs of the severe mentally ill, to be able to keep them in county rather than looking at the extreme costs we have anytime we have to send folks out of county.
I'd just like to point out one thing as we're getting ready to vote on this, and that is, you know, we have quite a bit of debate in this country about, you know, people taking pledges, no new taxes, et cetera, right? This is a tax increase, 1% on people that make over $1 million. This is being translated here in Ventura County into new positions to help mentally ill people. And I think if you have any experience working with Melanie and the Behavioral Health Department, the demand is enormous out there. And these are not superfluous positions. These are really necessary positions. And if we didn't have that tax increase, we wouldn't have that ability to expand in the midst of all of this other contraction. So if I said that the solution to every problem was a tax increase, I think you should say I'm crazy. But I would offer, if you say the solution is never a tax increase, I think you have to say that's an equally extreme position. There is a balance that we have to fight to get to in our society. So I say that only to try to give a little bit of a voice to sort of the great benefits of this program.
One last question and comment. And what we have, and what 63, I believe, was a result of is decisions, policy decisions made by this state in the early 80s that brought us to where we are today, and that was to shut down our mental health hospitals. Question on the services and supplies. I asked you this yesterday. You're going to give a little more detail on that piece of it.
The services and supplies, some of them are associated with the decrease in salaries and benefits. And then it's also the...it accounts for EPSDT increases and EPSDT. Those are contracted, IMD increases, and drug costs.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We have a motion, and we have a second out there. Supervisor Long, you're finished with your comments. I believe we're ready to vote. And that motion passes. Go out there and do good work, Melanie.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're at item 28.
Got one more here. This item 28 requests your approval and authorization for the establishment of two regular position allocations for the Behavioral Health Department Drinking Driver Program. As you know, DDP is self-sustaining on client fees, and the purpose of these positions, both of them happen to be management positions, but they release clinical staff who are currently caught up in fulfilling necessary administrative tasks, so we can release them back to program activities, which will assure access and assure decreased time to service. We have nine DDP sites. We did an expansion of two sites to Ventura and Fillmore. We've never added any management to account for those sites. Now that we see that we have that path, you know, we have the need there, we need to add these positions to, again, assure that we've got appropriate time to service.
I'd like to take this opportunity to let you and your staff know that I think this whole issue of what we're doing with drunk drivers is important to us, and I would appreciate some updates from time to time, you know, a report every year about what's happening with drunk drivers, et cetera. Supervisor Foy, and then Supervisor Ann.
And I agree, I think it's very important. The idea of establishing two new positions, again, you're going outside to bring these people in?
Correct. New positions, yeah.
I guess I'm just getting more concerned. We've established two new positions, and then at some point, we may have to find something, come down with this budget and changes, that you've already got people who could do this. Is there a way to even try to meld some of these people together? I mean, because we agree, it's a good...what we're doing here is good, and I like the idea that these people that are paying for it.
Sure.
But we have two things happening. One is we've got a future we're unsure of, and we may be hiring people over here and then laying somebody off over here. We could...I hate that to do. If there's an opportunity to try to find a way to meld this with people that are already here, it would be great.
Yeah, we've got...I think we've tried that, because we didn't add the management positions when we increased the number of sites. And what we're finding is that due to the increased administrative workload, they were having to pull clinicians to do that work. And so what that's doing is it's creating potentials for us to...we have a mandate that we cannot, in terms of time to service, we need to have certain timelines that we fulfill with that. And so we're getting kind of dangerously close to not meeting those mandates. So I think at this point, we're really feeling that we need to have other people, other than clinicians, and also people whose job duties are such and have the training to do these administrative tasks. We've got to be careful that we don't...that we're keeping in line with...
And I appreciate, I'm in your department, I just hate that to bring somebody in and then we bring to lose somebody else.
That's right.
Trying to keep people that are already here is something important to do. The other question I did have, though, was how accurate is our estimate of dollars? I mean, if you look at drunk driving, people are picked up, is it pretty consistent year after year, and so we know these dollars? Because we're going to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on this, right?
Yeah. Patrick, I don't know...oh, there you are. He can probably speak better to that. I know that, you know, we certainly...
I know we're projecting this fee increase that hopefully will pay for this. I was just curious of how consistent... Yeah, that's right, the drunk driving. I mean, how consistent are our drunks?
How consistent are drunks?
Is it like when we relied on the tobacco tax or some of our things?
Well, that's exactly what I'm thinking about. We all of a sudden get into it, and we just get down. That's part of my concern, is their consistency.
A lot of it has to do with the level of enforcement in regards to DUI, and there's been every indication that enforcement is up, awareness is up. We had a 21-day DUI sting in this county in December, and they netted close to 470 individuals. What we know is that most people who get arrested for a DUI, it's not the first time that they've driven drunk. Statistics tend to run around 85 to 150 times they've driven drunk before they're caught. So our anticipation is that the revenue will continue. Of course, people who are arrested and then come to the DUI program in order for them to have their driver's license released from suspension, they have to complete the program. So there's a very high motivational element there because perhaps their employment's contingent on it. But I hear...
Well, I guess I like the idea that the people that are causing the issue are paying for it. I mean, I think that's a tremendous way to do this. People should pay for what the issues they cause. But I think Supervisor Bennett, we're pretty clear that we thought at one time with tobacco, and then that starts to drop, and we have those issues we have to deal with. But I guess, in that sense, if it's dropping, then we have less people, we have to go through programs and everything else, so I guess we can adjust that as we go, so.
And one of the administrative tasks is to assure that we do the...we get the collection of the fees.
Yeah.
And follow up, so that the people are paying.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
Supervisor Long, I'm still...
Yes, thank you. I'd like to ask that you send a letter to the city of Fillmore to, one, let them know that we're investing in this position, and that part of that, you know, their role is to assist with public education to their constituencies. So just maybe a friendly letter to say that.
Okay. Let's see, for all the families that have been visited by the tragedies of drunk driving, this is really an important program, and you guys are doing important work out there, Patrick, and everybody else.
Mr. Chair, you have the lines that have saved too, you know, it's just immeasurable, you can't measure that, so I think it's a good program.
Could you repeat that statistic again? About...it's not the first time arrested...
85 to 150, you said.
Right. They've done national studies on first offenders for a DUI, and typically, it's somewhere in the range of, it's based on self-report and also national highway statistics, that it runs somewhere between 80 to 150 times a person actually has driven drunk before they're actually caught. More than that, first offenders tend to, who've been convicted, tend to continue to drive under the influence even after they've had a DUI offense. So coming into the DUI program and really examining their relationship with alcohol and also learning more about the risks, not just to them individually, but to the community at large, is really a good intervention.
All right. Can I call a question here? Because I'd like to get a couple of other departments done before 10. We have a motion and a second out there. We're ready to vote. And that motion carries. We are at item 29, and then I'm going to jump to item 33 for the benefit of the sheriff representative here, and...oh, I'm just going to jump to 32 for planning staff and then 33 for the sheriff, right? Go ahead, Mr. Nicole.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mrs. Robinson. What we have before you today is the first reading of a double reading of the Second Amendment to the Agreement between the Operating Engineers and the County of Ventura. In our original contract, we had made provision for a benefit to be paid as a premium for people who have certification to work on air conditioning systems. The language precluded it from being used in any place other than in the medical center. We currently have an equity issue where we have someone assigned who has gotten the certification, and we want to be able to pay for that 5% certification for... certification, and we want to be able to pay for that five percent certification for an operating engineer to work on all of the other GSA buildings.
Great, we need a motion? Second, we've got it, and we're ready to vote. While we're voting, I'll point out that I think being able to do these kinds of cleanups has been both evidence of and helps build the kind of trust that we need at the table so that we have good relations and good negotiations. Thank you very much. We're at item thirty-two, Mr. Stevens.
Good morning, Sheriff Bennett, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. I'm Chris Stevens with the Resource Management Agency. Really, I think it's a fairly brief item, I would add just a couple of comments for you. This is based on an authorization that's been in place with the Public Work Agency for a number of years. We kind of utilize that as our model. And the second thing I would like to add, and I mentioned this when I was before you a few weeks ago, this is the culmination of one of our first lean efforts, and our estimate is that this authorization for the contracts that are under a hundred and thousand that it applies will save our process approximately thirty days, and our applicants approximately five thousand dollars in staff time to do the processing through the board letters. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I also have Jennifer Padre.
Great, great to see lean six having some impact here. It's been moved, I'll second it to move it, and we're ready to vote on this item, thank you very much, and heed our call, we said continue to do this, right? Thank you, and we're at item thirty-three, Sheriff's Department Grant Application.
Members of the board, Mr. Chairman.
You can call me President if you want.
I represent the Sheriff's Fred Zions's Laboratory. I'm here to present for you to ratify the OTS grant before you, and there's no matching funds required.
Great. We've got a motion and second, we need to vote. Thank you. I'm going to, there we go, that motion passes. I'm going to move that we accept the consent calendar, but I'd like to add something to that motion, I mean, the correspondence agenda, I keep calling it consent calendar, thank you. And that is, we have some of these fairly long reports from Fish and Game in here, and unless we legally have to, legally do we have to do all this, or can we post these online? I know, if we can do the budget manual online, I'd rather, I'd certainly rather have that.
Your question is, do they need to be published in this form?
In written form, yeah.
And the answer is no, they do not.
Right, okay. So I'd like to also, if the board is comfortable with that, is that is identify, and just have this be the policy, if it's more than two pages, right, then the rest of it goes on to, you know, electronically, and just make a reference that if we want to see it, because it's probably the least reviewed in terms of the details, and there are quite a few pages here, and along the ideas of the climate change things that we're trying to do, we shouldn't be printing up any more paper than we have to.
Well, I'd just ask discretion of the clerk, it may be three pages, not two, but whatever the opening statement might be that's critical for the public.
Just so if we can decrease this, I mean, we've had this discussion once, and so if we can cut this down. So with that, do we have a motion and a second for, to receive the correspondence agenda? And that passes, and we're now ready for our ten o'clock. And I believe that Supervisor Long, are you? Oh, Supervisor Foye, thank you.
Ed Long.
Ed Long, she is going to be part of this. Well, this is a, I just really appreciate the opportunity to do this, and this year is our opportunity to honor Captain Brad Connors, who for his retirement, not for his retirement, for his service, and now he is retiring. And as you see him sitting out here next to the person that he took his place, which is Mr. Grossgold, and it's great to see them here together. His retirement, why don't you come on down real quick, Red? His retirement ceremony took place on February twenty-seventh, that was on Friday, and this to me was, it was just a tremendous, tremendous opportunity to watch that. I love the honor and all the things that you and the Navy do, and it's been great, but let me give you just a little bit of some of his background, and then I know Supervisor Long, who respects you with a long, all the rest of us do here, would like to say a few things. You know, Captain Connors, or as Brick, as they call him, his callsign, has approximately a thousand arrests and catapults from a whole bunch of different aircraft carriers. I had the great opportunity to go on an aircraft carrier and watch that. That is, I think you guys are crazy to do it, and just the idea of doing it, and then watching at night, standing on that deck, and I don't know where you guys aren't seeing anything out but that little spot on the water, and we don't even see all of a sudden you appear and you get caught on this cable. But they've gotten so good on these new aircraft carriers, they've gone from four cables to three cables. I don't know if they're going to get to two or one here pretty soon, but I guess the aviators are getting great. You know, and Captain Connors is a Top Gun pilot, I mean, we've all heard about those, and he is one of those special guys who have done this and trained a whole lot of people to be that, and serves our nation well. Captain Connor, again, as he served on a whole bunch of different aircraft carriers, I had the opportunity to be on the Lincoln, I know what you were there, and he is, I guess I look at this and I saw such pride as going on one of those ships, and the men that serve on those ships, and the people have done that himself. Let me tell you some of the other things, that he has trained, instructed, prepared others to do that, which has been tremendous. Captain Connors has also received the Legion of Merit, Matorious Service Medals, Air Medals, Strike Medals, Strike Flight Medals, Navy Accommodation Medal, Medal of Valor, Navy, from the Navy Marine Corps Achievement Medal, I mean, tremendous, tremendous things that he has done. But I guess one of the big things, I think, for our own county is that he has taken the time to go out and really, as it said in one of your articles, to rebrand the Navy here for our community, to really let people understand what the Navy is here in our community, and we know how important it is. And we know how important it is, we know that the men that serve here at our base, because this is the fifth largest base in the world, so it's not just ordinary men that serve here, it's extraordinary men, and I thank you for that. But the other thing that I've noticed is the leadership, the quality of leadership. I was interested in reading a little bit back your history, and you, like I believe, that leadership comes out of some of your things you learned in your youth, and playing sports is a great way, I think Supervisor Bennett would tell you that, playing football and some of the different things that you learn on the fields, and you're able to bring those same things here, and you've done a tremendous job with that. The other thing that I look at too is, you're taking those same things now, and he's coaching lacrosse, he's bringing those same things that brought him great success, he's bringing that also to our community. And I just want to say that we are thankful for your service to our country. I mean, you and people like you put out so much, and we sometimes don't appreciate enough what you do. I mean, somebody who has to move every two or three years and uproot your family and do those kinds of things, you do so much for us. And again, we want to say thank you and wish you best in your retirement, we also want to say thank you for serving our community here. And I know that all the places you've lived around the world, you're going to stay here because you find that Ventura County is the place to be. And so we just want to say thank you for what you've done. Supervisor Long.
Thank you Supervisor, and thank you for coming in today to give us the opportunity to extend our appreciation for your service to our base here in our county, and certainly to our country. I don't understand why anyone would jump out of a perfectly good airplane, but that's totally up to, obviously, what your goals have been in your career and what you've accomplished. And as Supervisor mentioned, your service to our community and the work with the engagement with the RDP twenty-one community partnership has been invaluable in both demonstrating to the community that the base is our base, it's our community, it has such an important and connected both the economic stimulus, but the families who are part of the base, the workforce that's part of our community, we're all connected, and you've been very open about that, very engaged with our community, and it's been very much appreciated. I'm pleased to hear that you will be staying on in the county, and your love of the sword is going to be a benefit to our youth, and just appreciate your good work, Brick, so.
Supervisor Gross. I'd like to share some too, I am not going to reiterate, you know, all the good things you've done, because they're all true. One of the most important things I like about the captain here is that he received the Dallas Cowboys over at Point Mago. And that was a great thing, you know, when Romo came down, you know, and you were very instrumental in receiving the Cowboys, you know, the off-ball team. But I want to thank you again for working the RDP twenty-one, and also, of course, you didn't work in the BRAC, but you helped save the bases, you know, it is what, one point something billion dollar payroll and thousands and thousands of jobs here for Ventura County. But I want to thank you for your leadership, and as I mentioned, I'm glad you're staying here in Ventura County, and congratulations.
Thank you Supervisor.
Brick, we'd like to come down and present something to you, if you'd like to make a few comments.
Well, I'll first say this, that I am very thankful that Ventura County is the last tour that I've served in the Navy, rather than the first one, because if it was the first one, all the stuff you talked about would have never happened. Because this is a great place to live, it's a great place to work, it's a great place to serve the Navy, and I've been honored with the opportunity to lead Naval Base Ventura County, and I know the men and women that serve there love this community and love to be part of it. So thank you all very much for your leadership, mentorship, and support to me as I worked through my last three and a half years in office. Thank you very much.
All right. I'm going to say two, are you ready? Three, two, one, two. I have to flash it works.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
I just have to say, you definitely look too young to be retiring, and you have been a wonderful role model for our youth here in the county, and while the country might not be having you serve them, I think our community is going to win out of it. So thank you so much for your service, look forward to working with you in the future.
You're too kind. Supervisor Parks, thank you.
And thank you for stopping by and introducing your replacement and everything that you've done for us. Good luck, good luck in the future for you. Bye now. All right, we have time before ten-thirty, budget report, so we have twenty minutes. My guess is we could go and take five minutes for a quick break, and then we could go in a closed session, all right? What's that? Oh, yes, that's right, very quick policy items there. Yeah, item thirty, I'd like to move the reappointment of three members of Mobile Home Park Rent Review Board, moved and seconded, you know, you need a vote. Thank you, Roberta, for reminding me of that. And thirty-one is Supervisor. Okay, there you go, now Supervisor Agosa for thirty-one.
You know, absolutely, you know, the reappointment of Richard Rodriguez of the Planning Commission, and also Heywood Merrick to the Civil Service Commission, two excellent citizens that are very important.
I'm sorry, I just hit, I just hit the motion, I meant to hit the second for you, but.
That's okay.
All right, it's time for us to vote. There we go.
Thank you.
All right, now we can go closed session. Do you have things that we can do in this fifteen minutes?
Productively.
Great, thank you.[1412.15]
All right, we're back in session for our 10:30 item on our budget. Ms. Robinson.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Bennett. I wanted to go back through as we prepare for next year's budget and talk a little bit about how much discretion your board has or basically doesn't have relative to the overall budget. And in terms of our budget priorities, we -- the credibility with the community, meaning our openness about where we're at with our budget, our openness about the impacts of our budget, we like to maintain that. We want to, of course, deliver county services efficiently and effectively. We will be challenged to continue to exercise fiscal discipline in this very difficult time as well as a continued commitment to a balanced budget process, which I am continuing to recommend that we support. In terms of the process itself, we have the calculation of -- we've done our forecast. We've -- in the process of sharing the developed net cost target budgets with the departments, and we will be meeting with the departments. We expect the preliminary budget to be before your board June 2nd and the final budget hearing on June 15th. In our meetings with the department this year, in addition to focusing on what their target is, how they're going to meet that, we will again be reemphasizing some of the information, some of the interests that your board has had in what are we doing and what are the departments doing to change their processes? What are they doing to figure out how to invest in the future? Because our future is going to be one where we will have to figure out how to continue to do even better with -- under difficult financial circumstances. For the listening public out there, most of your board has received certainly this presentation before, but I think it's a good way to start our budget hearings, to talk about how to make a small fortune, and it is, of course, to start with a large one. And so our current year's budget is $1.64 billion, the current year adopted budget. And once we take a look at that and we remove all of the special funds, the road fund, the fire district, all of those that have particular funding sources, we come down to a general fund budget of approximately $900 million. Then, once we look at direct revenue, where that comes from, and we might have direct revenue as payments of fines, recording fees, 172 funds go into our safety departments as direct revenue. Also, all the federal and state monies that are directly associated with programs that we have to provide are identified in that direct revenue. So once you take all the services basically supported by direct revenue, what do you have left to deal with? You have -- you then take -- excuse me, you then take that and you subtract out our highest priority, which is public safety, and that's $174 million. Once you remove the revenue that's needed to support the public safety budgets, you're left with $147 million. So you see, we're getting down to a very small fortune. Other non-discretionary expenditures include things like our in-home supportive services costs, our 17 cents on the dollar that we're required to provide, our contribution to our safety net that keeps that whole system running. We have an MOU with the state regarding the courts. When the state took over the courts, they required us to continue paying certain dollar amounts. You may recall that we were very active with our General Services Agency to work out agreements to limit that MOU cost, which we have done very successfully, but still we have those costs. We also have indigent legal defense. We have our contribution to direct aid programs that we have to match. Mr. Zimmerman a couple of weeks ago talked to you about, you know, he invests a dollar, brings $12 in or provides $12 of service. That dollar really is what we contribute towards that. So what do we get -- what are we left with? We're left with where you have discretion. We're left with the $78 million, and that has to cover everything that we do in general government. So whatever we have to contribute to the assessor's office, the auditor's office, our office, your office, whatever we have to contribute on the environmental balance side of the equation, and so whatever we have to contribute to Public Works, whatever we have -- and then whatever we have to contribute as matching to healthcare agency and human services agency. And both of those agencies bring in a dramatic amount of revenue. Each dollar invested brings us a substantial amount of services to the community. So while you have options for decreasing, they're not -- none of them are very attractive options, but that's what we're going to be confronted with. Some of the key budget assumptions for the '09-'10 budget year that we're confronting is, as we've expressed before, the secured property tax increase is now -- we are estimating it at zero as we move forward. In the current year budget, we estimated 3%. In the prior year budget, we represented 8%, we included 8%, and we -- I think we exceeded both of those assumptions in the previous year. Our general purpose revenue is down about $3 million versus current year budget. Tobacco settlement revenue is down about $600,000, and some of the tobacco settlement revenue does support activities within mental health, activities within healthcare agency. Our Proposition 172 sales tax revenue is down by $8.75 million versus our current budget, and as you know, our safety departments are busily working on how do they bring their spending in alignment with that reduction, and they're working on that as we speak. Our health and welfare realignment sales tax is also down by $4.6 million versus current year budget. Our contribution to 172, the fire contribution, based on the formula that's in existence at this time, would go up by $260,000. And we have not rolled in any assumptions related to state or federal impacts unless they're known at the moment, and most of those are big unknowns. So that's what we're working with. I wanted you to see what is happening in terms of trends relative to the assessed valuation, which is the percent change over the previous year. The blue line represents that. You can see the dramatic decrease from, what is it, '06 to '09, dramatic decrease down to zero. So this is the foundation of what we are working with. We're continuing to work these things through, and that really concludes my presentation other than to again emphasize we are looking at the future in a wide variety of ways. We are looking at things that we can do to cut costs. We are also looking at things that our departments can generate and do differently to also affect costs. So that's -- that's our presentation for today, and I'm sorry, it can't be more tough.
Could you just hold that -- I mean, you know, so they're, you know, '92 and then the drop down to '96 and '97 shows a similar, although not quite as steep, of plunge that the county has gone through, which is just instructive for us also to be aware of that. Those were tough times back then also.
The green line represents the smoothing effect if we try -- we average it over the rolling 10-year average. Because, you know, when we have years that are high, we don't budget at all. That's one of our guiding principles.
Given the financial crisis, given the banking difficulties, given the increased requirements that will be out there for home mortgages in the future, I think it would not -- I think it'd be prudent for us to not expect the real estate market to come back like it has -- like it came back after '96. That's -- I don't think we're going to see that again. It came back that way because of excessive lending that won't be repeated again with increased regulation and stuff. So a running average of eight is -- it strikes me as high. A running average is going to be much more at the bottom of that trough, if at all.
Yeah. I think -- Paul, what did you say that, as bad as this looks, we're in, of course, so much better shape than a lot of places. What did you say Riverside was or North?
I think it was San Joaquin County is looking at minus 15% or in that range is what I heard, so, for their assessed valuation. I think this morning, LA Times had an article, I think it was, LA County is expecting a minus 1%.
Minus what?
Minus 1%, but they have over a trillion dollars, so it's -- we're talking about some real dollars. But the -- I think it was Orange County was 0% to 2%. They're kind of leaning toward the zero also, and I forget the numbers, but they also had San Bernardino and Riverside, and I think they were in the minus 4% to 5% range if I recall, but it was in today's LA Times.
I think the other factor as we move forward, you'll see that the board's frankly insistence on fiscal discipline, the fact that we did not expand 3% at 50, all of those things, some of those other counties not only have a steeper decline in this, but they also have a sharper increase in costs because of some fiscally imprudent decisions they made.
Mr. Chairman, the question I had was the $600,000 down in the tobacco settlement revenues, what's causing that? Is that the?
Well, it's a tax.
But I understand, but is it because less smoking or because of?
Yes.
Or because of economy or?
Part of it is less smoking, part of it is they set aside some dollars and that type of thing, but it's not -- it's a complicated formula as far as nonparticipative manufacturers and that type of thing, and participating manufacturers can set aside certain dollars. This year, we did get a piece of those dollars, so it's a combination thereof. Hey, when our efforts to see smoking work, we lose money, which is, I guess, a good thing. That's what we want overall, but hopefully we save money on the health side, but we lose direct revenue.
Less smoking, so we save on the other side. It's an intangible tactic.
Yeah, hopefully it is because reduced smoking and not some other way of getting a product, you know? Just some linkage.
Supermarket perks.
Yeah, just awesome, looking at the trend lines there. Interesting that when we did take the big drop near 1996, you know, low property assessment values, and then in looking at, you had the whole dot-com growth and, as you were saying, the lending of money for housing and all that, you see the growth going up into 2000. But then, you know, all during that time while we had that increased growth, the county was not doing anything particularly towards increasing their revenue, increasing their reserves, you know, and holding on to those funds. So I think we're in better stead also just because of the policies that the board has put in place that has managed to keep up a reserve, and hopefully these lessons learned and we -- from the housing market and also from the dot-com, and you just start looking at how to avoid those things in the future. And I think in that way, we've been doing a good job and hopefully can weather this and apparently better than a lot of the other counties.
That's correct. I agree with that.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I think we're going to go back into closed session for a few minutes before -- oh, thank you. Move a second in, we need to vote to receive and file this very pleasant piece of information. There we go.